John Dillon.
I'll second that. Make it my part of it.
Jim, Jim will put Jim down there. A motion has been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations?
I move to close nominations. I'll second closing nomination.
All in favor of closing nominations? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. All in favor of electing John Dillon as moderator, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So moved. Mr. Moderator.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, next like to read the
Guess who's here?
Just want to make sure it's not here. I'd next like to read the call. The meeting into the record is published in the River East News Bulletin on Friday, October 11th, 2024. I would ask the town clerk to record the return of notice along with the minutes of this meeting. Legal notice of special town meeting Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. The electors and those persons eligible to vote in town meetings in the town of Portland, Connecticut, are hereby warned and notified that a special town meeting will be held at the Buck Foreman Community Room, 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, at 6:40 PM for the following purpose. Be it resolved, section one, that the town of Portland, called the Town, transfers ownership of its decommissioned 1948 Mack Antique Fire Pumper Fire Truck to Portland Volunteer Fire Department Company Number Two for the purchase price of $1. Section two, that the first selectman is authorized to execute any and all documents on behalf of the Town for the transfer of ownership, dated at Portland, Connecticut, this ninth day of October 2024. Signed Ryan J. Curly, First Selectman. I would now entertain a motion to introduce the resolution entitled, "Transfer of Ownership of 1948 Mack Antique Pumper Fire Truck to Portland Volunteer Fire Department Company Number Two," and to waive the reading of the resolution.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I'll now call for the public discussion on the resolution. Anybody have any public comment? Give it a minute. That's all you got? All right, being no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to move the question tonight.
So moved.
Second? Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, so at this time, everybody can, uh, uh, vote, and if you come up here, just put it in the box here, please. I need to get one myself. Are there any other outstanding ballots at this time?
Make sure you try to get the attention. Okay, guys, the result of the vote, 21 yes, zero no. No abstentions. The motion passes. Now, now, now the most important motion. The most important motion. Do I have a motion to close this meeting?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Who seconded that?
Mike Pelton. The meeting is adjourned at 6:46. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:00 PM, and I will now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. And I just want to point out that our recording secretary is not here this evening, so please make sure that all of the selectmen speak clearly and anyone from the public into the microphone so that we can capture this for recording tomorrow. Okay, so the next item is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on October 9th.
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Got it.
Thank you both. Sean made the motion and Mike Pelton seconded. Any errors, changes, or omissions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Next is the meeting, our special meeting, from October 15th, 2024.
I make a motion we accept those minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, any, Sean made the motion, Jim Tripp seconded. Any errors, changes on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We'll move on to acceptance of tonight's agenda. I just am going to, uh, just move one item under Communications and Correspondence, which is next. We have a proclamation for National First Responders Day, and I'd like to just move that down to item nine. I'll, we'll read that under Status and Committee Reports this evening. So, um, with that, we'll move on to, actually, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion we accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, Sean made a motion, John seconded. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Great. So we'll move on. So I don't have anything under Communications and Correspondence then, because we'll do that proclamation later. So we can move on to item six, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment this evening? Okay, is there anyone? Is there anyone online? Okay, I don't see anything. There is a second public comment later in the meeting, so if anyone changes their mind, they can do so then in comment. So we'll move on then to item seven, which is old business, and item A under old business is the fixed assessment agreement with Brainerd Place. Uh, our developer, Dan Bertram, is here in the audience this evening. Thank you for coming, Dan, to the meeting. I know that the Board of Selectmen have been working on, uh, amending this agreement to incorporate the third phases and the recently approved plan and zoning modification. So, uh, with that, I don't know if there's a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion that we, that we, uh, that we adopt the, uh, Fourth Amendment to the amended and restated agreement to fix the assessment, um, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Motion made by Jim, seconded by Mike Pelton. So I'll call for discussion on this, uh, Fourth Amendment to the fixed assessment on real property for Brainerd Place. Don't everyone jump in at once?
I'll just make, just a quick, a quick comment or two. Um, I feel good about what we're doing here. We had a lot of discussion about it. Um, we, we reviewed the numbers, and I think we came up with a good compromise in here that I feel comfortable with.
All right, anyone else, or should I call for the question?
Call for the question.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One, uh, one opposed?
Yep.
And any abstention? So one, so six yes, one no. Okay? Great. And with that, motion carries. So we will take care of this right now. Thank you. Dan here, Dan, I'm gonna sign these if you want to. We will make you stay through the whole meeting.
No, I appreciate it.
Great. And so this is gonna be your copy, and I'll take that. Thank you.
Aye, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it. Keep our shoulder to it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So next under old business is item B. It's our monthly report from the Committee on Solidarity. I, I see Hope Jones is with us this evening. Hi, Hope. Can we get Hope on the Zoom, please? Hope, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me out?
Yes.
Hey, Hope, how you doing?
I'm doing fine. Um, we had our last meeting on October 8th at the Senior Center, and, um, one of the things that we have been working on, it's based on the SOBO report, the State of Black America from the National Urban League for 2024, and a letter was sent out to recruit members of the community to participate in a discussion group about the state of Black Portland. And, uh, a group's gonna be personally invited from upcoming date, and a copy of the report was sent with invitations and copies are available at the library. And our intent is to provide a safe space for candid discussions and, um, sharing experiences in which we can, uh, develop a rapport on, on how everyone feels in our community that everyone's welcome in our community. Um, the next thing, uh, our private work group, um, with the Portland Library also movie event, with Tony Barriolo. Um, he's a trans man who is an advocate for trans youth and their families, a motivational speaker and trainer. The movie's called Self-Made Man, and is a documentary about his life and work. It was followed by a question and answer discussion with Tony. And his book, How He Made My Way Out of the Darkness, How I Found Self-Love, next up, this was available for just and will be available at the library. And then next, uh, Juneteenth, um, our work group has met kind of as a review of last year and what worked and what didn't. And, um, some of the discussions, um, reflection meeting included changing formats maybe for next year, um, looking, maybe looking for partners to help with the activity of the day, or maybe some multiple activities spread over the month. Um, trying to make it a little more educational and, um, trying to get the schools and students more involved. And, um, we have a 70 Wadsworth Avenue tickets for the Young Stack Collection of Juneteenth that were not used, and they'll be given out at the upcoming SOBO events and the Voices of Portland. Next Juneteenth meeting is October 4th. We are continuing to collaborate with Portland Historical Society and Portland Library on Voices of Portland. Tended to date for the next event, February 22nd, 2025, at the Middle School on High Street. Prior to the event, a podcast interview will be recorded and released. The planning team for this event was awarded a grant from Connecticut and the US as well. And then we're waiting on, trying to get a paragraph in River East for our committee, like a weekly edition. Um, and it will tell people what the committee does, um, and also include what's happening next. And then the last thing I have is, there was a part of open discussion where we talked about, um, some comments being made about open choice program at schools in Portland, and how we should be aware that this might be a discussion that our committee might want to get involved in. And, and we're looking maybe to get, uh, re, uh, you know, have And we're looking maybe to get three, you know, have the library, why is that we used to have three, three invasion apartments? And is it, any questions or comments?
Well, I just wanna say, Hope, I'm looking, I'm really looking forward to the next Voices of Portland event. I attended the last one. I know a number of the selectmen did. It was, it was a really amazing event. I'm really looking forward to seeing those, those videos from the podcast studio. I know I'm looking forward to, to hearing more about Portland's history from, from the people who, who were here and experienced that. And so I just wanna thank you and the solidarity committee for all, you guys are always so busy, and I just wanna say thank you for all that you do.
You must, I too.
And looking forward. Thank you. We're looking forward to Juneteenth, whatever, whatever shape that it comes in this year, for sure.
Okay, yeah.
So, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right then. So with that, we'll move on to item C under old business, which is the Bonding Referendum FAQ that Selectman Dylan had made a motion back over the summer. We, we talked about it back, I think, in early September. And, and I know, John, you wanted to close the loop on this, so I'll let you kinda take it from here.
Yeah, just if, if we all recall, I went back and looked through some notes. On June twenty-sixth meeting, we had a discussion about trying to provide information to the public for the upcoming school issue on the ballot. And we had a unanimous vote to do that, and we, I had listed, I believe it was ten or eleven items that were suggested items. And I, at the time, I think the language of the, the, the vote was that it would be, these items plus anything else deemed appropriate. And then according to notes, we, Ryan, you gave us an update in August on it, and you're working with Board of Ed and with Town Council and with Bond Commission and a number of, of different entities to get the information. And the last note I had on September fourth meeting, we said you had hoped to discuss it at that follow-up meeting, which was the eighteenth. And unfortunately, I was not here, I was sick. And I, I just feel that since this was what we all deemed an important item, and with the election coming up in a couple of weeks, it's just important that we, we kinda close this loop before that happens. So I, you, you provided a document, and I'd say the vast majority of what I had proposed and what we voted on was included in one way, shape, or form in the information that's been provided to town residents regarding the school project. There are just four items on this sheet, which there's a notation. And I just, I think for the record, it's important, I could just ask you if you can give a little background, because these were some of the things I had thought of, you know, of future expenses we might have. And I know in your discussion, from my recollection, is that Bond Council had some issues with those certain types of information, and therefore they were not included in this as all the other stuff was. So if you could just give a little synopsis of that, I'll consider this a close issue.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, John. So all of the information that is presently known is what was included in both the school bonding FAQ as well as the water FAQ. And there are some items that we had discussed that are, while we, we know they're coming, we don't know exactly what those costs are going into. And I'll give you an example, the sewer fund, for instance. Our Public Works Director is going to give an update in a little bit. But we've talked about costs. What, Ryan, what's the full cost estimated for the sewer plant at this time to, to fully replace the sewer plant?
Forty-five million.
Forty, so estimated forty-five million dollars within twenty years, though, right? When that concrete starts failing twenty-plus, twenty years down the road, we're, we're going to need that. We know that that's coming, but at the same time, that forty-five million, we've also talked about potentially joining with East Hampton or Madison, which would provide alternative solutions. So to say, to say definitively that we need, the town needs to spend forty-five million dollars within the next ten, twenty years, it's very difficult to put that on an FAQ because it's not a known cost at this time. It's, it's something that's been identified, but it's not something that we can pinpoint to say, okay, we're gonna have to spend that, and we gotta get ready for that today. But that is, it, it's something to be aware of. And, and many items, I know I mentioned what, the items that are on our capital improvement plan that we prove every budget season. And so you have those five years.
That's actually where, in, in developing my motion, that's where I got a lot of that data, was from our, our capital plan and the budgets.
Exactly, and so as you know, every year during budget season, I think this board does a pretty good job working with long-range capital to determine what the town can fund and, and what does need to be pushed off a little longer. And we're always balancing the needs of the town with what the town can actually afford. So to, to, to say this is what we actually have to spend, it's very difficult to do that because this, it's this body that wrestles with that every year. And so that was another thing that was, that you struggled with, to put it in an FAQ because I know we've been talking about Company Three Firehouse for a long time, and I know that's been talked about replacing at some point. Are we gonna do that within the next five to ten years? I, I don't know. And so those are, what we tried to do was we tried to put on the FAQs every known expense and everything that tangibly we can say today. For instance, a real cost is the repairs to the secondary schools, which I know this board has talked a lot about. That is in the FAQ, it's in the Friar Report, and it's, it's in the Facility Study Report. I mean, so that's, that's been discussed quite a bit. Let's see. And then water maintenance. I think Ryan's gonna talk about the, some of the water maintenance that we have today. But we've, I just found out, and Ryan's gonna talk about, two leaks that we just detected. And so those are things that can pop up, we know we have. And we have more than two big leaks, but some of the little leaks we can wait a little longer on, I think.
But for clarification, the, this really is the, the Bond Council's, I call it guidance, but it sounds like it's even more than guidance. If, if this isn't a real concrete cost, you couldn't put it in.
So that's what, so I sent everything over to Bond Council, and they, they kinda put a big red line through a lot of the things that we wanted to say. And so you kinda send your, your wishlist to them, and then they tell you what you can actually say. So, so yes, we have to be very careful, and we have to have everything vetted through Bond Council, and so I.
I think, I think too, Ryan, right, and we had also talked on the night that we, about this, is that not only looking at the costs, but we also have some, sort of like some positive levers, right, some place, things we know are coming in. You know, we know we've got, you know, SPA, we know we've got, you know, Brainerd's moving. But we can't necessarily talk about all those things because you don't know if they're definitely gonna come to fruition. So we're not allowed to actually try to put a number to that because we don't know.
Exactly, and I did speak with Bond Council today on this as well. And he reminded me that, our attorney reminded me that interest rates can change on all this as well. And so that's what makes, that's what makes projections so difficult to, to put down. But yes, there are, I, I know exactly what you were trying to get at here, and I think it's a, it's a very valid point.
I appreciate what you did for what the information we got here, and I understand when, what Bond Council said no to, so.
I just have one question in regards to sewer maintenance and enhancement cost. I know Ty and Bond did a study, I think it was in the late two thousands, early, maybe two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve. I read it several times.
It was, it was in, it was in like the mid, mid to early teens.
Yeah, and it had a look ahead of what we needed to look at, how much money we needed to put in capital on that, and where we would be in, I think it was ten or fifteen years. Has any of that information been looked at while we're coming up with what the sewer needs or coming up with what, you know, numbers we would be looking at down the road?
Ryan, do you wanna come up and, and talk on that now?
So it's actually good timing on that question because we got a revised proposal from Wright Pierce today, who we've been talking with, not only about the aeration and blower project, engineering for that, but also to, to come up with all of the capital expenses that are gonna hit us in the next ten years. The UV system, the bar screen, the grit removal, and any possible little other, you know, pump or, or pipe that we have in the ground out there that could come up. So I have that proposal. I'm hoping to get that through in the next week and get at least the engineering and the numbers to a lot of the big expenses coming up at the sewer plant. That way, the board will be aware and, and everyone will be aware of kinda the, the big numbers coming up down there. And then also, you know, we're gonna look, have them look into, you know, funding, you know, grant opportunities and things like that, that they could look into to help us fund these projects, whether it's clean water funding or USDA funding, or, you know, who knows? There might be something else out there that Wright Pierce may know about that, that we don't, that we don't know about right now.
Should we be looking at joining with somebody else soon? So we don't invest too much there that's gonna go to waste if we do join somebody else?
Yeah, so we, I, I and myself and Chief Operator down at the sewer plant had had an informal conversation with, I, I don't know if he's the CEO or President over there at Madison District. And we ran into him at a conference last month. And he's saying that right now it is unlikely that the DEP would let them take in more than they're, than they're taking right now because of infiltration issues that they have on their whole system. Obviously, he's, he's open to, you know, making more money, but I, I think overall their plan, I don't know if it can handle it. And it sounds like he wasn't too excited by the idea of it. I guess he's got enough problems, he doesn't want another one. That also being said, we, we also had an informal discussion with Middletown and the pump station they put in to shut down their, their sewer plant across the river down there. I guess is not size big enough for us to go there and then go north. So that would need significant upgrades. And then there's a, you know, a Portland, Middletown, Madison deal that we get involved in that I don't know if that's the right move for the town, just because all right, now you're not only paying Middletown and having to, to maintain another pump station, you also have to pay Madison for taking everything, and then Middletown for, for having the water flow through, you know, the wastewater flow through there. So I, I don't know, it sounds like, it sounds like the direction Portland's gonna need to head in, which is staying, you know, with their own sewer plant. That's what I would think right now. Obviously, these things need to still be looked into, but that's preliminary discussion. It sounds like we're gonna still need to have a sewer plant long-term down there that we're gonna need to maintain. So I think we need to move in that direction every project we do. We need to know, hey, this project, whatever we touch, it's gonna last X amount of years, and everyone's gotta be aware. All right, this project is gonna cost two million dollars, and everything we touch in that project will last forty to fifty years, or twenty years, whatever it is. Just know that, that way, you know, these things don't come back around, you know, in a short period of time, and everyone's like, well, we just did that, why do we gotta do it again? The clarifier project that we just did, I mean, that's, we put coatings on old concrete. We upgraded some of the components of the clarifier, but we didn't upgrade everything. We upgraded the drives, some of the fittings. We didn't repaint the steel, so the steel, some of it's still rusted. So it's, you know, maybe a good five to ten-year project, and that costs seven hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna be easier to maintain. It's probably buying some life out of the concrete, but a lot of the aggregate's still in the tank. We only coated where, right around the weirs and the baffles where the water is, is settling, we didn't coat the whole tank. So there's still some exposed aggregate at the bottom of the tank, and, and the cost would have just, you know, doubled, tripled had we wanted to coat the whole thing, which I don't, I don't think it would have been worth it. Yes, we're gonna buy time here. You know, maybe it's, maybe it's twenty years. But, you know, that's, that's just kinda, we gotta go into these projects and know what we're actually getting out of them. Yeah.
I'll just add, I did have a conversation with the town manager in East Hampton not too long ago. And as you all know, they are still interested in discussions about water. And we did discuss potentially sewer as well. And so the thought high level was maybe we send, we sell them water, and we could do something with our sewer with East Hampton at the same time. So that's another potential option that we could explore as well, and I, I know we're, we're interested in all options. So I just wanna let you know that I plan to continue those conversations.
Yeah, yeah, going down sixty-six is gonna be no easy feat, but I, I think it would, it would help to expand the base at, at both the water system and the sewer system, and lessen the burden on the, the current users.
Thanks, Ryan.
Help, help from an economic development, too.
Absolutely. So just to circle back then to this, this guy.
I, I, I'm good. I, I, I just thought we needed to circle back on this to, to kinda put it to bed before elections. So we're, we're done with it, and I appreciate the work you did on it.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you all. All right then. So with that, we'll move on to item D under old business, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Is there anything this evening? Okay, and there is still the vacancy from Jillian Crawford, alternate for Parson Recreation Commission, which is on there. So, all right, with that, then we'll move on under new business. Item A is an update from our Public Works Director. So Ryan, come on back up. Thank you for coming. As you all know, Ryan's last day with us is November first. And so we, we wish him well, but Ryan's gonna give us an update on the state of public works.
Yeah, so this is more of, you know, putting a, a bow on, on my time here, so I'll just, I'll just get right into it. So a, as you all have heard, and as Ryan just stated, I'll be resigning from my full-time position as Public Works Director on November first. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to serve as Public Works Director and grateful for my, the coworkers, all the residents of Portland, and many of the people I will continue to be friends with for years that I've met during my time here. This job has been rewarding professionally, with being challenged every single day by the task of leading seven departments, including the, an entire water system and a sewer plant. And personally rewarding with feedback from employees, residents of the community, and the support for all we've done and are trying to accomplish. Every public works employee, along with each member of this board, deserves recognition for the list of work we've accomplished over the last two years as without funding and support, none of the important work we do to maintain the town infrastructure is possible. So I'll read off a, a short list of accomplishments by the public works team over the last two years. We've replaced water lines and services on Hilltop Drive, Dogwood Drive, Russell Avenue, and Perry Avenue. Applied for a steep grant for a new water main project for High Street from the high school to Clearview Drive. Those bid documents will be going out soon. Searched and likely found a new water source for the town water supply and started drilling and testing a new production well at the Portland Rec Complex. Repaved High Street from sixty-six to the high school, Freestone Avenue, Perry Avenue, Russell Avenue, Hilltop Drive, Dogwood Drive, Williams Street from Scenic to Main. Clarifier upgrades at the sewer plant. Supported the design and award of the pump station upgrades at Co. Avenue Pump Station, which we are waiting on the contractor to start. Installed new sidewalks from Freestone Avenue to Riverside Street. Replaced sidewalks on Main Street from Arvid Road to just south of Bell Court. We pumped down Job's Pond that was flooding many houses. We pumped down Job's Pond that was flooding many houses. We installed a new fire alarm system and fuel management system and pumps at the highway garage. We supported the kitchen upgrades at the senior center. We awarded the project to upgrade the outdated fire alarm system at Company Two Firehouse. We replaced the roof and the carpet at Town Hall, and designed and awarded the last phase of this project with framing upgrades and chimney work still to take place this upcoming winter. And there's countless other maintenance and project support items that are addressed every day by our dedicated town employees. I can't thank the town employees enough. Without these crews taking care of the everyday items, none of this work would be possible, as I would not be able to focus on the bigger projects that I've listed. I look forward to continuing to stay in touch with many of you, and keeping some of these big projects going forward, even after November 1st. And I'm hopeful that the town employee will find, or the town will find a good candidate to fill my shoes, and look forward to helping them come aboard. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Just for the record, 'cause your minutes are being taken from here, but Ryan, I can't say enough about your hard work. I mean, I live next door to the Town Hall, I see you coming and going all the time, and just what you just read is proof.
Yeah.
You've done a great job, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
You forget Job's Pond, too.
I had it.
He had it.
No, I wanna say the same thing, both working my time on Water and Sewer Commission, and then being back on the board, I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with you. I look at the amount of work that's been done, and the amount of work you've been able to get out of, you know, the team, and how well the team has been able to perform, and what you've been able to do with the budget. Just really, thank you, really, really, good job.
Thank you.
You're gonna, you'll be missed.
Thank you all. Yeah, I'm gonna miss it here. You know, the whole thing was unexpected, I was not looking to leave the town. You know, a call came, and it basically said, what do we need to do to get you back? And that doesn't happen often.
No, it doesn't.
In this day and age, you know, that's where you gotta go. I mean, I've a lot of years left to work, so I just gotta do what's best long-term. But I am gonna miss it here, and I, it did, it tore me apart to think about leaving. So, thank you, thank you for everything, you know, over the last couple of years, it's been good. Do you guys, I figure I'll leave it open for any questions, I know we have a bunch of projects going on, some of which I didn't name, you know, that are floating out there either in design, or, obviously, we talked about the sewer plant, but if you guys got anything else, so.
How about the capital, the capital items that we budgeted for, the dump body truck and attachments for the excavator?
Yeah.
Did you get POs for those yet, or what's those tabled still?
No, so the dump body truck, either, there's two options, and none of which happened quickly. It's either, well, there's one that could happen quickly, but it's not gonna be, you know, everyone's choice would be a bid waiver for truck builders who built the last five dump bodies for us. I thought about proposing that, but it's, they are, they build, you know, their trucks, they're the only ones that sell them. I was asking for them to send me a letter that says that, to support, you know, wavering a bid for it, but I think the right move is probably having it go out to bid with the specifications needed for the dump body, which I just haven't had time to put together. The, as for the attachments, first, the dump body needs to go out, we need to see how much of that funding we're going to spend. I think I mentioned this when we were putting the budget together, 'cause we did some last-minute changes on those two items, from, I think, the highway supervisor's pickup truck, we moved them to those two items. So we were hoping there's a balance that we can maybe transfer over, and that we may be able to get a mulcher head for the excavator. Right now, there's not enough in that line item to move forward with that, so I think we were hoping to get some balance that goes towards it. There's enough for like a HO Ram, but that's, that's not what, you know, we really want right now. And then, I, yeah, I am, you know, gonna stick on part-time for this transition phase, as I mentioned here, you know, to keep some of these big projects going. If I'm involved in, you know, a budget season coming around, I don't know, you know, I guess it all depends who ends up taking my position, and how quickly they can pick up everything to where the town feels comfortable, and, you know, I go, I go off on my, you know, on my way, but I may be involved budget season, I don't know where we can address some of this. And then I also may, may be able to push some of these things out. The big thing I'm focused on is the RFQ for the well project to, if this referendum passes November 5th, to get that phase moving with another engineer slash construction manager to move forward with the pump house, the treatment system, everything like that. I think that, that's top priority, and making sure that project is successful. Right now, they're drilling the monitoring wells, hopefully by Thanksgiving, the production well, and we'll keep moving that forward. We'll see what happens at the election.
And I'll just say, thank you, Ryan. It's been a pleasure to work with you over these past two years. The list of accomplishments that you've been able to do is extremely long, the town is very grateful. For all that you've gotten done, I know every time I ride on High Street, I'm very grateful. But no, honestly, thank you.
You've still got time, you can still say no.
I say, I say we all take up a collection.
I wouldn't. But no, thank you. Wish you the best, looking forward to continuing to work with you in the capacity that we can get you in for now. And thank you for helping us with the transition as well, 'cause that is important. As I've told this board, we've been here before, unfortunately, these things happen. Administrators don't last forever, people move on, and we're very happy that you, your career's progressing, but we're very grateful for all the work that you've provided this town, and the town's in a better place because of you, so thank you.
Thank you for offering to help us out through the transition. I retired from the state two years ago, when a large number of the administrators all went at the same time, and, you know, it just, that program was close to my heart, and I knew I had to help them through it, and it made the transition so much smoother when you've got somebody you can ask those questions to. I think that's great that you're willing to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, and it did help me out when I had started, Bob Shea, obviously, was still in town, and it was, it was an asset, and it helped me, you know, learn a lot, a lot quicker than if no one is answering the phone, and you're just finding folders and saying, what is this? And then all of a sudden, you know, you have a report that's due or something, it's, I'll be able to help fill that person in. Hey, I plan on having, you know, basically a sheet of paper saying, project, where we are, and then, you know, things due to the state, when. I wish I had some of those things, 'cause it's not, it's not good when you get the email from the state saying, you're late on this, and you're like, whoa, I didn't even know I had to do this. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, so we'll move on under New Business to Item B, which is a, in your package, you'll see a revised Parson Recreation Field and Facility Rental Policy. Our Parson Recreation Director, Andy Dion, is here this evening as well. Andy, would you like to come up and talk about the policy changes? So you may recall, we, this board approved a Town of Portland Field and Facility Policy not too long ago. Last year, Andy?
Yes.
And so this is a modification, it was in effect for a year, and in that year, I think you saw some areas that we could tweak this, so why don't you talk about?
Sure. So essentially, what we have here is changing the policy slightly, because according to the town attorney, current policy is a first-come, first-served policy. So on the second page, we have our priority list for users, and, you know, this board agreed, and the Parson Recreation agreed, this is what we wanted. It sort of makes it that, ensures that Portland kids get the first shot at using these fields. But the attorney said that without the additions, which is on the first page, those sort of bullet notes, anyone could request to rent a field, and I would have to approve their rental request even if it was a fourth priority user. So for example, even though we all know Little League's planning to use the fields next spring, if someone else wanted to rent the fields, and they happened to get their permit in before Little League, I would have to approve their permit. So the changes are just that now, I will review all the spring applications on March 1st, and then refer to our priority list, all the summer applications on June 1st, and all the fall applications on July 15th. That way, we can refer to the priority list that was already agreed upon. And then, the other change is just slightly changing the wording under rental requirements and fees, to make it more clear. The Parson Recreation wanted me to change that, before it said field slash facility, now it's separated and more clear. But the biggest change is those bullet notes on the first page.
Does anyone have any questions for Andy about the changes? I think these are much needed, I wanna thank Andy and the Parson Recreation Commission. We put it, they did a great job initially, helping to craft this policy, and then seeing it in action. I think what facilitated this is we had something similar with, I think it might've been soccer, where someone had rented, submitted an application to rent a field, but that was supposed to be already rented to one of the town organizations, and so it caused a little bit of a confusion. So this clears that up.
So this will allow you to have all the applications in one stack?
Yep.
And then review them, rather than have to be a onesie and potentially cut somebody else out.
Exactly. Makes sense.
And I'll say too, a lot of good discussion with the commission on this, a lot of back and forth, and a lot of really looking at the words, so it's good. I think also fit, too, is that this was reviewed by the town attorney and all that, to make sure we were good.
Yes, Kerry reviewed this.
Yeah.
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion.
I guess.
Do you accept it? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, well, I'd just say, I'll make a motion that we accept that the Town of Portland Field slash Facility Policy updated as presented.
Seconded by John, motion made by Jim, so we'll move to discussion, any further discussion on this?
No.
Good. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Great. So with that, we'll move on to refunds of excess payments, Item C under New Business.
Can we do this, 'cause Pelton's on here?
Yeah, I'll second him for you.
John, you're in.
I'm making a motion for a refund of excess payments for VCF S Auto Leasing, $479.72.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, CoreLogic Refund, $5,730.96.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Robin Q. Cobble, $186.3.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Great. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on under Status and Committee Reports. I just wanna touch on a couple things. One, as you know, early voting is currently underway right now. I heard from the town clerk today that we've had 603 voters vote at early voting, about 200 a day over the first three days of this. In addition, there's roughly 430 absentee ballots that have been sent out in the mail or to individuals as well. So with that, I did the math, that's over 10% of the town's electorate has already voted or will be voting soon on this. So I encourage people to take advantage of early voting, it's at Town Hall in the old probate office, it's very convenient, and if not, you're well, we'll see at the polls on November 5th. So it's just nice to see all the options, and I'm really hoping that we have a great turnout this November for the polls. And I think that's it. I know Ryan really touched on all the public work updates that I would, I would update you on, so I don't have any other announcements this evening, other than Halloween on Main is this Friday from 4:00 to 6:30, so I hope to see everyone there. This, the weather's looking good, it's gonna be a little cooler than today, but it's going to be dry and nice. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we do have a proclamation this evening for National First Responders Day, which is coming up on October 28th. I think, Sean, would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you.
Proclamation, National First Responders Day, October 28th, 2024. Whereas first responders, including public works professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 9/11 operators, paramedics, and other emergency personnel, stand on the front lines of our communities, selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of Portland, Connecticut, in times of crisis. And whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disaster accidents, natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Portland, Connecticut, to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the sixth annual National First Responders Day, sponsored by bipartisan resolutions in the US Senate and House. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Ryan J. Curley, first selectman of the Town of Portland, Connecticut, hereby proclaim October 28th, 2024 as National First Responders Day in the Town of Portland, Connecticut, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies, paying tribute to our public works, first responders alongside law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, 9/11 operators, and other emergency personnel, to recognize and substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. And to witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Portland to be affixed this 23rd day of October in the year 2024. Ryan J. Curley, first selectman, Town of Portland, Board of Select, Portland Board of Selectmen, John H. Dillon, Michael S. Hernandez, Robert W. Hetrick Jr., Sean P. Manning, Michael A. Pelton, and James K. Trich.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think it's kind of appropriate, we're reading that, I watched on the news just before I came down here, the Weatherso firefighter that was killed fighting the fire in, I believe it was the Berlin Fire?
Yeah.
You just never know, and what these folks do for us every day is amazing, and they deserve all the credit in the world, so. And keep that firefighters' family and friends' and our thoughts, too.
Well said, John, yes, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Can I, before we stray off this, I do have the update for last week's Board of Ed meeting that I went to?
Oh, yeah, no, thank you.
Just a couple things, and they had a jam-packed agenda, as they always do, but the beginning in the meeting, their Portland Public School Spotlight talked about the Bridge Program, which, honestly, I've heard of it, but I didn't really understand it. It's a, it's a program for children K through 6 that's at Brownstone School, that's where it's based, and it's designed, you know, kids that have some special needs, maybe need a little extra assistance, it bridges the gap for those kids with the, with regular classrooms in Portland, but more importantly, it allows the kids to stay in Portland rather than... But more importantly, it allows the kids to stay in Portland, rather than having to, you know, outsource them to another school or another program. So, this, they spoke about this. They had some of the kids that have, they're currently in the program, and it took a lot of guts for them to speak up, and some that have already gone through the program, and how the program benefited them. A parent spoke whose child was involved in the program, and some teachers spoke. I, it was just, it was, it was very impressive, and it's, it's amazing what our school system has, you're not even aware of. One other item they talked about, a letter was received from the Connecticut Department of Education commending Gildersleth School. Gildersleth joined a cohort in 21, 2021, '22, and was identified as a focus school because it had some high needs in their math growth in their program. And they said, since that time, they have achieved distinction status for math and, and their growth in that area, so they were recognized, which I thought was really cool. And then, there was just a, a very detailed, let me go, there was a paraprofessional position at Valley View, approved unanimously. And then, they went into Board of Education policies, and they had a very, a detailed, very interesting conversation on new policy for sexual harassment, and how it applies in the environment of schools with, with children. And it was very interesting and a thought-provoking conversation there. And those items were both moved and passed, and then they moved into executive session, and I bugged out.
Thank you, John. Good update.
I got a couple of things, Tom. First of all, they're, they're as comprehensive as it was, there are a couple of good updates from Water and Sewer to share from the Water and Sewer Commission meeting. One, the monitoring wells, based on the work that we approved, and the town approved, those expenditures a couple of months ago. The monitoring wells, the drilling was starting this week, actually may have started today, right? They were, they were, yeah, yesterday. So, they're looking at, anticipated to take about four weeks, about one week per well, and they're looking at three or four monitoring wells. There was one additional well that was suggested that we're looking at, as to whether or not that's feasible to go where they would want it. And then, the production well, which will be the 16-inch casing, that we're looking at, starting, hopefully, before Thanksgiving, right in that ballpark. It's really gonna depend on when, when we can mobilize the vendor to do that. Already covered all the other stuff in terms of, I think the only other question, and I know, I think, and this has been asked about the status of COAV. Some of the major materials have, have all been received, like the pump and things like that, but there's still a couple of smaller items that the vendor is waiting to get in. Then, I guess there's a couple of hiccups on supply chain issues, is at least what's being reported. And so, that, hopefully, the COAV will, will start soon, the pump, the pump work. And then, Parks and Rec, one, congrats to Parks and Rec. 173 people came out for the 5K, which was phenomenal. Raised around 4,000, or just a tick over 4,000, you know, so, so just a successful event for that. Interestingly, they, they were looking at starting a subcommittee to investigate how to create a little bit better 5K course. And that may involve looking at the Route 17 park and the wooded area, which would also have an ancillary benefit, probably to the, to the Portland cross-country team. So, I think there's a few things that they're, they're gonna talk about. There may be some, maybe in the offing there. You already said Halloween on Main Street, 4 o'clock on Friday, and we already discussed the policy, so. That's, oh, the only other thing is they did, in terms of benches, they did look at and settle on a standard for benches donated to the Route 17 park. So, in our respective organizations, where sometimes people are looking to make those donations, we want to make sure we, if it's going on to the Route 17, to the rec complex, we run those through Parks and Rec, because they're gonna have some, a standard selection of what they want to do, to make sure there's consistency at that facility. Is that all I got?
Thank you. And since Ryan's here, I was gonna look it up, but leaf pickup, do we, what are the dates?
The Monday after Thanksgiving.
The Monday after Thanksgiving, leaf pickup will start. I know, I'm very busy in my backyard right now. I'm sure everyone else is, too.
I just keep running them over, and then I throw them in the woods.
There you go. All right, any other status and committee reports? Okay. So, we'll move on to public comment, item 10. Is there anyone in the audience this evening? I don't see anyone, so we'll turn to Zoom. Is there anyone online that wishes to comment? Give me a second. Okay, so seeing no public comment, then we'll move on to item 11, which is Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. Does anyone have anything this evening to discuss?
I just wanted to bring up, if we can talk at the next meeting, well, I believe, the Blue Earth, the composting.
The Blue Earth composting. Now, I know Ryan sent numbers on Blue Earth. Yeah, I mean, we, what, you want to add it to the agenda?
Yeah.
To discuss the continuing? Okay, sure. It's been, do we want to talk about, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll have that next time, then, the numbers and all that.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. I think it's been working well, from what I understand.
I just think it's rather expensive for what we get out of it.
Okay, yeah, so, okay.
I just have one thing, and this has been brought up before with different boards, different people, but it's never really gone anywhere. And I think we have to get with Fire Chief Quita. There's gotta be some type of committee, or commission, or something established, where we have a look ahead on where our future is with the Portland Volunteer Fire Department, when and if we think we're gonna have to go to a paid daytime, what those numbers might be. If you look at where we are right now, I think that our replacement rate, and I know our replacement rate is much below our, our leave rate? I mean, right now, I think our over, our average interior firefighter is 50 and above. There's quite a few of us getting closer to 60 age, some of us over 60. And I just hate to see somebody sitting in your chair, Ryan, down the road, and nothing ever being said about this, and then all of a sudden getting, you know, like they're hitting a brick wall. So, I just think that we should put that out there, and maybe come up with something the first of the year, talk to Rob, and see what he thinks.
Sure, I think we can discuss that during the budget cycle.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I haven't, I know this board tries to provide the fire, our volunteer firefighters, our police departments, our emergency services with, with everything that we can. I do know that volunteerism is, it's tough. It's, people are very busy these days, and we do get that. However, a paid fire department is, is an expense that we're, for as long as we can go without it, I think we're gonna go without it.
I agree with you. I agree with you on that, but I think, but we need to know what it would cost.
Much, much like what, what Ryan was talking about with Public Works earlier, about just having those five and 10-year lookouts.
Right.
I mean, I think it, I agree. I think it's something we need to look at. All I would do is I would add, add one thing to that potential agenda for that group, would be not just looking at potentially a paid fire department for daytime, but also the other side of the coin, which is, what can we do to entice?
And keep?
Folks, to entice and keep people in the volunteer fire department.
And that's, that's the?
And I know, I know everybody around us, all towns are having issues.
The reason why I brought this up last night is because we had a, quite a lengthy discussion about it last night around the firehouse, and where we are, where we think, we think we need to be. But it's, you don't want to get to the position where no one, no one wants a paid fire department. And Westfield said that at one time, you know, and South District said that at one time. And Blastonberry, I think, you know, they're working on two guys now, but Cromwell went daytime, and then they ended up going full-time. I know they're much bigger. Colchester's half, half-paid. I mean, Salem's gotta pay. So, I mean, it's, you don't want to be there, but you don't want to be blindsided either, where you're not meeting your, your NFPA standards or your insurance standards, and then all of a sudden, our rates are going up because we can't get the response.
But to be fair, that, it's not currently a problem.
No, right now, it's not a problem, but I like to look like in the future.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. I think we have, we have a lot, we have a lot of current things on the list, though, that do need to be addressed, but yeah. So, I, I think that should, you know, I will talk with Chief Quita about his thoughts. I honestly, I would expect if, if there were any concerns from the chief, he would, he would speak with me on that. I'm happy to reach out to him about that. But to this, to date, I have heard nothing from the chief on, on a paid fire department. So, I would, I would want to have that conversation with the chief first.
Okay. That's what Bob said, too. Anyways, move on.
All right, so anything else under general informal discussion? Just add. All right, so I don't have anything on the follow-up items this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, so that's 801. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.